We're meeting to order city council on April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five at six oh one P. M. Norm, if you please do roll call for us.
Mayor, Mayor Hendrick.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Stoker.
Present.
Councilmember Mitchell.
In person.
Councilmember Thompson.
Present.
Councilmember Vasquez.
Here.
Councilmember Cornell.
Present.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Mayor, we have a forum.
Thank you, ma'am. Before we get started today, I want to turn the program over. Councilman Chris Haney, he had a tragedy today I'd like him to address and have just a, just a moment of your time. Chris.
Today, in, in this city and all over this, this country, we, we have tragedies every day around suicide. Suicide is, is the end. And a lot of people just don't even think of it that way. They don't understand what goes on around, around their families and everything, but I want to reach out and I'll give you my phone number. It's four three two, two five zero, five five three one. If you ever need anything, I'll have coffee with you, I'll talk to you, I'll pray with you, I'll do whatever it takes. There is other things that can be done. We, we can help our neighbors. If you see somebody that's not coming outside, see somebody, be proactive, just check on your, your friends and your neighbors. Somebody seems down, somebody seems lost a little bit, just check on your neighbors. Let's do something other than try to, try to ignore what's going on in this country and this world. This is a epidemic that's just eating this country up and it starts with our kids and it goes all the way up to our seniors. We just need to be proactive in everything that we do. And I'm sorry to interrupt this meeting, but if you give me two minutes, just pray. God, we thank you, Father, for every day that you give us, Father. We know, Father, that days are harder than others, Father. Things come at us, Father, from every different direction that we don't understand. We need to just take it, Father, and give it to you where it belongs, Father. And I'm asking for anyone, Father, that's in any kind of shape, Father, that thinks that they need to just leave this world because they don't, Father. This, this world's got its bad things and it's got its good things, Father, but most of all, Father, it's got good things going on. And because you put good things here, Father, for us. And I'm just asking for blessings over all the families, Father, and all, anybody that's got something going on. Father, you know their needs and I just say all of this in Jesus' mighty name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you for those sincere words, Chris. All right, Pastor Hendricks here to give this in our invocation. Oh, come on up, sir. Stand if you're able, please, for the invocation.
Let us pray. Amazing God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for everything. We could stop there, but we have work to do, Father, and we just pray for families this day. We pray for our school kids, we pray for their homes, we pray for their neighborhoods, we pray for our churches all over town as they reach out and be a beacon of light to those that are lost and alone. And Father, you have given us one of the greatest gifts ever and that is your son, Jesus. And we thank you for that gift and we pray that you teach us to love like Jesus, including our neighbors. And that means we check on them. That means we nurture them, we pray for them, we feed them, we do whatever we need to do. Father, as your church, we have work to do. Father, I thank you for those who have chosen to lead this city and I pray that you lead them boldly. Do you give them strength, do you give them peace? And with that peace, we give patience. Father, we just thank you again for everything, for it's in the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit that we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Hendricks. Councilman Andrew Mitchell, please lead us in pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To the Texas flag.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Please be seated. Norm, are there any comments from our citizens?
We do, but they're on agenda items, so I will call them at that point. We, we do, Mayor, have a speaker card for number three, which is on the consent.
On agenda item three?
Yes, sir.
Okay. With dissent or the regular agenda?
Consent.
Okay. We're going to remove that. We're going to move, you need a, a motion in a second to remove it from the consent agenda. So I need a motion from council.
Second.
Councilman Stoker had a motion, councilman Thompson, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That'll be removed from the agenda, placed on the regular agenda, consent agenda, placed on the regular. All right. Let's go ahead and address the consent agenda. As everyone had an opportunity to review the items on the consent agenda, so I'd entertain a motion.
May I also move that we accept the consent agenda?
Motion by councilman Vasquez.
Second.
Second by councilman Cornell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion was unanimous. All right. Let's go now to our consent agenda that was removed from the agenda. Number three, consider approval of a request by S thirty-one, B forty-two LLC for a zone change from FD, future development district, to LI, light industrial district on forty-one point four-four acres of tract of land situated in the southeast quarter of section thirty-one, block forty-two, township two south Texas and Pacific Railroad Company survey, Hector County, Texas. Liz.
Good evening. Sorry, we're trying to see if we can pull the items. Just so you guys can kind of see what we're talking about. So we talked about this one two weeks ago. It's, it was feature development and they're requesting a zone change to go into light industrial. Everything around there is feature development. What is touching that parcel, however, in that area, it's all light industrial. That's why we're continuing on with that specific zoning. And that's why staff was recommending the approval for light industrial. And now I will, pretty much, if you guys have any other questions, if not, I'll let the person that wants to speak on the item, speak on it. And then if you guys have any additional questions, we can talk about them then.
Absolutely. Thank you, Liz. Can our citizen comment? Who is it?
Donald Murray.
Sir, you have three minutes to speak.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I thank you for the opportunity. My name is Donald Murray. I represent Blakely Construction Company. We are not in the city. We do enjoy this property and the information that I received, which is extremely limited at this point, shows that there's an exclusion zone on this thing that encompasses one of my water wells, my primary water well. It's our primary source of water out there. So therefore, I'm against this. I don't have any idea what is coming in the future and what have you. I represent Blakely Construction. We've been there for sixty-five years. We have an annual payroll of twenty-three million dollars and we are opposed to this. All right? That's all I had to say.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much, sir.
I already have Alex there.
Alex? Yeah.
Water information on this area? We have talked, we've, we've been talking about this area. We believe the water is on one ninety-one, no, I twenty.
We currently have no water and sewer infrastructure in this area. So we do have some, we have water that extends on Murphy Street all the way down, but it does not go south for the property. So there's no water or sewer infrastructure. It does run nor, I'm sorry, down east and west down Murphy Street, but there's no water and sewer on the south side from Loop three thirty-eight or up and down the interstate east and west.
And the lots are going to be over two acres, but there, if you go to the next one, Dahlia, you can see that the lots are being split, split up to over two acres. Therefore, they can have a septic and a water well in there, which is what's required.
So, Mr., you got water wells in, can you go back to the green shaded area? You have water wells in that area?
I do.
Are you using them right now?
Absolutely.
Okay. Would this, would this action exclude his use of his well?
So they would have to put in their own wells and, or they would have to figure out how to bring water to their properties. They can't go and take from somebody else.
But I think he's more worried about.
About the, the area.
Having his quality of his water.
So this, in, so we have been looking, and this is an area that we are talking about maybe possibly bringing in water to, to this whole area because of all of the businesses that are coming into this area, but it's not going to happen today. It's going to take some while. We're trying to figure out funding and everything. We've been talking to, you know, within the city, trying to figure out how to bring water here. If this is something, I think, that we should at least give the owner the opportunity to be able to speak on it, because I don't even know if they have a use right now, like they might just be giving it the zoning, because if this would have come in, how we do things today, it would have had the zoning and they would have been able to build something in it today and that's all they're doing is giving it a zoning.
I'm a little confused where the city limits are.
So go back to the previous one. Do you see that, it's very hard. Do you see that gray box? That whole gray is inside city and the white would be outside city limits.
So this is inside city limits?
That is inside city limits. His property, as he mentioned, is outside city limits.
So this property owner, are they here today?
They're not here today because it was second reading and usually when we go to second reading, we don't have.
So the property owner would have rights to drill a water well on their property, would they not?
Yes.
How does that impact?
That's why I was saying, in my opinion, it shouldn't.
So whether the zoning happens or not, these, this owner would have the right to drill on their property for water?
Yes.
I think the concern, at least I understand the concern would be switching it to light development, there could be chemical stored there or something on the ground, chromium, one of those things that are potential heavy metals. I think that's the concern I'm hearing, I think. Come on up again, I apologize, but come on up.
That is my concern, is we don't know what's going, coming in the future when they do this and what have you. And several years ago, back in seventeen, the city was going to annex that property, but there's no plan to provide water or sewer out there and what have you. So we're, we're relying on that water out there. We truly are. We, we don't need to lose the water, that's just it. And with no control over what businesses come in there and what have you, it's just a shot in the dark as to whether we're going to be able to use our water well or not. The water in that area was contaminated several years ago, north and east of us, and it's just been a year or two ago that they quit testing the water. And so we fought that battle, Mike more especially than us, for years and what have you, and it's just now got cleared up and what have you. So we don't need to go down that road. This is the tremendous source of water right there. There are lots of things that could be done to utilize that water, but to take a chance on somebody storing chemicals or something in there that would be detrimental, that is just unacceptable to us.
Understand. Thank you. Liz, what do you?
So.
What does light industrial district mean in terms of land use?
So there's several stuff that can go in there, not chemical, not mixing of chemicals or anything. That would be more of a heavy industrial use. This is more like industrial. I would have to bring the list, I don't know them all from the top of my head, sorry.
Got you. No, I'm.
But what I did want to say is, this area, as you can tell, there's pockets, right, that is inside and outside. If we were to zoom out, you would see a lot of it be like that in that area. It's a very crucial, in my opinion, area. Like you mentioned, there's a lot of businesses there that do need the water. We have worked with Alex and Joe and your bond and Aaron to kind of start looking of how we can bring water into this area. We have reached out to O D C to see if there's something that we can do. I think the rough estimate, correct me if I'm right or wrong, it was between twelve to sixteen million? I can't remember.
It's a very rough estimate because when you're talking about sewer in this portion, gravity would not work. So we would have to put several lift stations in this area for sewer. Water is water, right? So you could just lay the line there and go depending on how we would do that, especially in the text dot right of way along I twenty. So that would be other things that we would have to incorporate in this, acquiring easement, certain things like that. Originally, the cost without any lift stations was around eight million dollars, but included with engineering and design, easement acquisition, anything like that, you're looking upwards to ten to twelve to fourteen million dollars for.
Is that, is that water and sewer?
That's water and sewer, yes, sir.
Have you separate out just water?
Yes, we do have them separated. I don't know them off the top of my head. I think when I did it, it was, came out to like seven or eight, so I think it'd probably be around half, just for water. It would probably be around the four, four and a half million.
One more question. Are you worried about chemicals getting in your water? Is that your main concern?
Absolutely.
That's what you worried about. You're not worried about the infrastructure that they want to do. You're worried about his water getting damaged. That's his concern.
If you want to provide either water, that's do what you want to do. I've got to have water.
So, so that infrastructure would help his water problem also. The infrastructure would help his water problem, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But they would have to, ideally, they would have to come into city limits unless we do a mutual agreement.
The Blakely Construction Company would have to come into the city?
His, his, if we end up building the water lines there, in, in order to get access to city water, they would have to come, officially come into city limits.
And he's counting.
He's counting right now.
Do we, the owner of this property is not present though today?
He's not present, so.
Seems like maybe we ought to table it. I don't know what y'all think, but.
Table it. I make a motion to table this for.
Tables are second.
Second.
Second by councilman Cornell. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Matter's stable for now. Thank you, God. We appreciate y'all coming in. Thanks, Liz, Alex. All right, let's go to agenda item number five. Discuss and consider request from Lulac Hispanic Heritage to fund advance for two thousand and twenty-five use of funds. Carol, you're in here, please come up. You'll have it on your table, y'all have a grant.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here before you. If nothing else, we've already submitted the paperwork to the city manager, the proposal, and we also provided websites for you to look into our history and our, what we do with our cultural events for the city of Odessa. If nothing else, we're going to learn how important the vote is and we're going to be able to go back and encourage, we're starting with our leadership development for young men. Their engagement in community events starts with their culture, really, because that's their nature, that's their family. So we want to thank you for the opportunity to be able to request the funding and if you have any questions, we're here for you.
Thank you, Carol. Gentlemen, any just questions, discussion?
I, I do have something, my question, that is, Mr. City Manager, remind me of the date timelines of when organizations can request hot funds.
Yes, sir. So this request is really out of cycle for current year dollars. We're out right now advertising for next year's allocation, so applications are due for those applications or allocations. When do they due?
Sixteenth of May.
Sixteenth of May, and that's for next fiscal year. Okay? So this request, as I understand it, Carol, is for funding for this year. So it really is out of cycle. Everybody that followed the, the proper application process for funds this year did so about this time last year. So I hope that answers your question.
Part of it. The other part would be, is it my understanding that hot funds, the people that requested also have to submit something that shows evidence that they are putting heads in beds?
Yes, sir. It's, it's usually part of the application and I provided the application that Ms. Uranga filled out in front of you. I, I'd say that's a direct question to her based on this application.
Yes, we have been a part of the Arts Council in the past and they required heads on beds and proof. And what we usually do is submit the actual invoices from the different motels that they stay in and we make allowances because we do bring in, our culture comes from El Paso, San Antonio. We're trying to develop our own groups here, but we do bring the major entertainment, the major events do come in from, from those areas and they stay, you know, we make, we make arrangements for them to be able to stay in the hotels here. We go to all the hotels for bids and then we use the ones that, that accommodate everybody.
So how did you provide for this last, did you apply for the funds last year?
No, sir. We had not applied for funds since we were part of the Odessa Council, Arts Council, but then we started doing our own events because we had, we, we, it was more of a local thing and, but now we bring in more people and more people are mariachis, are, are. I don't know, Gerardo Cruz, do you want to join me up here for a minute? Gerardo brings in a group from Cancun, Topolavanka, something, you know, in Mexico, and, and he helps us make all the arrangements for them. So we've been doing this for forty years without funding except for what we got through the cultural council. And can you tell them more or less what you're doing?
We have brought in.
Introduce yourself, please.
Gerardo Arzate. We have brought in Mariachi Cruz from Monterrey, Mexico, and done, gone into the ECISD and done some workshops with students in the Mariachi programs at Hector Junior, Hector Middle School and at O H S. We're also right now looking into bringing soccer tournaments, bringing in teams from outside. We're looking at bringing in about ten teams from Mexico, San Angelo, New Mexico, Dallas Fort Worth area. We're looking about bringing about fifteen to twenty teams from outside. About thirteen people average come per team and they usually get about four rooms per team.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think the problem is kind of off cycle is that the last council decided to pay a group from Dallas to do these events. So she would have had the funding to do Cinco de Mayo had that funding been allocated last year, but that didn't happen. So she needs the, the makeup of this because it's a half to do Cinco de Mayo to, to fund that. So this is this year's funding and then you'll be applying.
Yes.
Next month.
Next month for the next program year.
Yes. We've already, that's why we were asking for all three events, but, which is Cinco de Mayo, Die Seis de Septiembre and Dia de los Muertos. Now, when, when the previous administration granted, brought in Dallas, they didn't post it. Otherwise, we would have gone for it at that time because we didn't know it was available. But now that we know and we know that we can, we've been doing a better job, we did a better job, we actually had Dia de los Muertos on Dia de los Muertos instead of at our convenience. So we follow traditions, we follow culture, we follow history and we've been doing it for forty years. And that's all we're trying to do, educate the public on what our culture is all about. And, and we do it and we do a good job of it. But we come to the city because now we feel like we have a step inwards because we've walked the walk, we've talked the talk with you and now we need, we need your vote.
My concern is this, Mayor and colleagues. First of all, I have a conflict of interest here. I have been associated with helping Ms. Uranga and her Lulac and Hispanic Heritage over the years. They do bring in a lot of outside visitors, but as a city councilman, I'm bound to follow the rules of the funding processes that we have in place. And what I'm understanding here, and that's why I'm going to abstain when it comes down to the vote, I'll just be honest with you. If I'm understanding this application correctly, Carol, you're asking for this council to approve you for fifty thousand dollars out of the hot funds.
Yes, sir.
If that's what I'm understanding. And that's where I have the conflict is because I, as a city councilman, would, would, would not be in agreement because it's not within the cycle of this year's hot fund distribution. At the same time, I am very supportive of what their efforts are. I just wish that, I wish that you had applied for the hot funds last year for this year's events.
Well, I wish we had known that they were going to spend two hundred thousand on Dia de los Muertos.
That's.
We didn't know. We didn't know, but no, it is an issue because there is a law in city council and I'm not there, here to do politics or anything, but there is a law that any money going out of city funds needs to be posted if it's going to be put out for, for bids, right? And it wasn't. So there's places where you follow the law and then there's places where you don't. And it depends on who you are and the authority that we gave you as you were appointed, but if we had elected you, you're supposed to represent what, what the community wants, right? So if we didn't get the same chance, if we didn't get the same chance because we did not know about it, that's what it boils down to.
Apologize. You're making reference to the Navarro group funding?
Yes, sir. Hello?
So was any of that Navarro group money, did it hurt the hot funds last year?
Now, Navarro was paid out of the general fund and I think Carol's point is that that should have been bid on, there should have been bids for that award amount and they weren't offered the opportunity to do so.
And she's, and she's right. Is that correct, legal?
That's correct.
Very good.
And, and if you remember, last year, the Black Cultural Council came before the, the past council, somebody of course sitting on it, and y'all gave them fifty thousand dollars out of the general fund because at the time.
Black culture?
Yeah. At the time, they had not, at the time, they had not proven up to show that they could be eligible for hot funds. So that is an option in this regard. You could do the same.
Well, I think they absolutely qualify for hot funds and I don't think that even funding it out of the cycle, you know, I think the discussion was it's, it's, it's funded in June out of tradition, not, not out of any obligation to a.
And that is correct. It is funded in June out of tradition because anytime, it's not, I mean, today, if you wanted to award them hot funds, so long as they could prove it up, it would not be illegal, it would be okay to do so.
So if we gave her okay to date, then she comes back in two more weeks, she gets another okay?
But that's for another.
That would be for another event.
Fiscal year.
Let me say this, I, I hear the, I hear the issue, but in truth, there's no law, statute, ordinance that limits when we can give hot funds. In a perfect world, should have applied in June, that's okay, next year.
We're ready and we can follow any, any, any criteria that you have or any, anything that you want even afterwards. We're people of integrity, we're not going to do you wrong. We do want to come up with a right, with a right fit for everybody, but right now, we know what we can do if we had the money, but we haven't had the money. So we're requesting that.
Just one word of caution on, on hot funds, this qualifies under, in my opinion, under the fifteen percent for arts and culture. So if, if you award this, you do have room right now under that for the current year for this fifty thousand. I've looked at it, I think we have room. For next year, when you're considering that, you need to be aware. You, you generally give the Arts Council, the Council for the Arts, close to that fifteen percent to award these type of grants in the community.
So are you open to working with Randy in the future on the grant?
Oh, yes, definitely. Whatever it takes.
Have you been given that opportunity in the past with Randy?
Yes, sir. I was on the board for the Arts Council forever.
But you, but you did not apply for the funds at that time?
I'm sorry?
You did not apply for any funding source from?
Yes, that's why I was in the council because they were awarding, I have served on their board, I served as their treasurer, I was on their board of directors, right? But we were also applying for Hispanic Heritage. That's what kept us going for like twenty years.
Okay.
And then we. years. And then we decided, and then forever it stopped, it stopped.
That's historical information I did not know. That's why I'm seeking these answers.
Well, and I will say, we know we had a lot of struggles the past few years with you guys and the council, so I will speak to that.
I wouldn't say the council.
We were.
All right. Any discussion, questions?
Actually, Carol, may I ask, you did say this application was for all three events?
Well, no. After visiting with Richard, what we came down to it will be for the two events, Cinco de Mayo and Die Seis, because then we're eligible for the hot funds, and we will come back and apply for Dia de los Muertos, which will be even bigger than last year.
Okay. So, your ask is still fifty?
Yeah.
And then it's the two, okay.
For two.
Well, I'd make the motion that we grant the hot funds, even though they be out of cycle, because Carol and Hispanic Heritage is the proven expert in these events. They have performed them for years, they have proven their success, and I know they will do it again. So, I would make the motion, we grant them the money.
Motion for Councilman Stoker, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Mitchell. All those in favor say aye.
I abstain due to a conflict of interest or participation.
Because he's Hispanic? Hello.
It was unanimous, with one abstention.
Taking it out of context.
So, it passes unanimously with one abstention.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Forget, two weeks is coming up again. So, don't come back in next year with that.
All right. Let's go to item number six. Consider approve the purchase of a Brazos E Citation product from Tyler Technologies with OPD. Chief Gurkey.
Good evening, Council Mayor. This is simply a consideration of approving the purchase of a Brazos E Citation product from Tyler Technologies. This technology pairs perfectly with the technology in municipal court. It's the brother software to the, to the software in municipal court. We're moving away from our current solution, because it just is not living up to expectations and promises. In fact, it was so bad that after the first year, we were, we actually looked to move away from last year, but they, that technology company gave us a year free. So, this year was been free. So, we're moving forward with Brazos, with a startup cost of ninety-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars, and then a recurring cost of just a little over eighty-nine thousand dollars a year. This is, this is budgeted for us, and moving forward also.
May I have any questions for Chief Gurkey?
Wish we could have the three sixty-five lab, but this will-
The three sixty-five lab is really, really nice, but it's really, really expensive. So, we did test three different products, and this gave us the best bang for the part.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Gentlemen, any questions? If not, entertain a motion.
So, move.
Motion by Councilman Canel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Stoker. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to pass unanimously. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
All right. Item number seven. Consider award of a bid for twenty-twenty-five friction seal, job number twenty-five zero zero one one two dash three one. Yvonne?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. This item is to consider award of bid for twenty-twenty-five friction seal. The bids for this project were opened on April ninth, twenty-twenty-five, and two responsive bids were submitted for this project. The lowest responsive bidder was pavement restoration in the amount of one million, six hundred forty-four thousand, five hundred seventy dollars. The Public Works Division is planning to use advanced mineral seal technique in lieu of seal code for a portion of preventive maintenance, for the preventive maintenance program. And the purpose of this project is to seal approximately four hundred fifty-six thousand, eight hundred twenty-five square yards of residential streets, which is approximately twenty miles, linear miles. The Public Works Department has reviewed the bids and recommends awarding the bid to pavement restoration in the amount of one million, six hundred forty-four thousand, five hundred dollars, and the funds are available in the Street Division Maintenance of Infrastructure account. And I'll be happy to answer to your questions.
Gentlemen, any questions?
Have we used the mineral seal before? I'm trying to remember. It's a lot, it's more advanced.
We have done some pilot tests of this product for the last three years, and we were pretty confident, and it's a good product.
Good performance.
Yes.
Entertain a motion.
So, move.
Motion by Councilman Thompson, is there a second? By Councilman Vasquez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is unanimous. Don't move a muscle, sir. Number, item eight. Consider award of bid of twenty-twenty-five seal code, job number twenty-five zero zero one zero dash three one.
This item is to consider award of bid for twenty-twenty-five seal code. The bids for this project were opened on April ninth, twenty-twenty-five, and four responsive bids were submitted for this project. The lowest responsive bidder was Ronald Wagner in the amount of one million, two hundred, two hundred, two thousand, one hundred forty-three dollars and eighty-two cents. And the purpose of this project is to seal approximately three hundred thirty-six thousand, five hundred eighty square yards of major and minor arterial streets, which is approximately thirteen linear miles. And the Public Works Department has reviewed the bids and recommends awarding the bid to Ronald Wagner in the amount of one million, two hundred, two thousand, one hundred forty-three dollars and eighty-two cents. And I'll be happy to answer to your questions.
Gentlemen, any questions? Don't entertain a motion.
So, move.
Motion by Councilman Tom to accept.
Second it.
Second by Councilman Vasquez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion to oppose.
Motion to oppose.
Doing two things. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Yvonne, can I ask you a question? Maybe me and you need to have a meeting. When can we discuss repaving streets in Odessa? What do we need to do to get to that, that moment? Can we, you sit down one day and just talk about it?
Of course.
All right. We'll go smoke a cigar. I mean, I just, I just, I think we need, there's some streets around here that need to be repaved, instead of putting a ceiling on it all the time. That's my opinion.
There are some schedules.
We're moving that way, actually.
Okay. I'd like to see some neighborhoods and streets repaved around here, instead of just building up, building up, building up. But we'll get to talk.
You don't like driving in the van home?
No.
I agree.
Thank you.
Keep you awake. All right. We're going to open a public hearing to consider renaming a portion of Murphy Street to Martin Luther King Junior, or MLK Junior, approximately two-point-five miles of Murphy Street. Renaming Murphy Street from Grant Avenue to Standard Avenue, Standard Avenue from Murphy Street to Dixie Boulevard, and Murphy Street from Dixie Boulevard to Interstate Twenty. Joseph?
Hello, Mayor and Council.
You gotta hold the, you're, yeah.
I'll get to it. They'll make him do it the whole time.
I want to consider renaming a portion of Murphy to Martin Luther King or MLK Junior, approximately two-point-five miles of Murphy Street. Renaming Murphy Street from Grant Avenue to Standard Avenue, Standard Avenue from Murphy to Dixie Boulevard, Murphy Street from Dixie Boulevard to Interstate Business Twenty.
Thanks, Joe. All right, let's open up a public hearing. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak may do so. You limit your comments to three minutes. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak? Come on up.
Mayor Hendricks, City Council. My name is Dawn Miller, School Board Trustee, Place One. I'm here in support of this. It's long overdue. I didn't know there were still cities in the United States of America that did not have a Martin Luther King Street. So, I hope that you all will find that this is long overdue, and something that is very important for our community, not just the African-American community, but the community as a whole. So, thank you so much for finally coming aboard with this.
Thank you, Dawn.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we'll close the public hearing. E discussion, Council. Oh, come up, ma'am. I apologize, I didn't see you. Let me reopen the public hearing. Come on up here.
I did not say I was talking.
Well, come on, we're glad to hear you.
I just have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Why doesn't it go from Grant? Oh, my God, I don't know what's going to-
It goes from Grant, because that's where the boundary of the east and west starts. This is what I suggested. And it goes all the way to the interstate.
Twenty.
It goes across Grant. I didn't want to bother Murphy the other way, because Murphy is a family name in Odessa, so we didn't want to bother that part of the street.
That answers my question?
All right. Thank you, ma'am. All right, now we'll close the public hearing. Any discussion?
I had a question. I know we talked about on the large signals, it would be Martin Luther King Junior, but on the cross streets, unfortunately, the signs would be too big?
They would be too long in the wind, but fold them in half. And then the mast arms will have the bigger Martin Luther-
Show the crowd, if you don't mind, Joseph.
At the traffic lights, that's what you'll see, at the main intersection.
At the main intersection?
Yeah.
Right. Does anyone have a motion for me? Eddie?
I make a motion to move forward.
Motion by Councilman Mitchell to move forward, renaming the street, MLK. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Councilman Stoker. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Odessa now joins many cities across the nation that recognize Martin Luther King and his dedication to peace and justice. We're proud.
Eddie deserves special recognition for this. Thank you, Eddie.
Thank you. And I want to thank the council. They, the mayor stepped up for us. So, y'all make sure you support this council. We trying to make moves in Odessa, Texas, so get ready.
Need a motion to remove?
I need a, need a motion to table. If they want to read it first, then do a motion to table.
All right. Let everybody a chance to clear it all down. All right, let's do Agenda Item Number Ten. Open a public hearing to consider approval request by Imperative Chemical Partners, Inc., for zone change from FD, Future Development District, to HI, Heavy Industrial District, on forty-three-point-four-three-six acre track of land in Section Thirty-two and Forty-one of Block Forty-two, T dash two dash S, TMP Railroad Company Survey, Odessa, Dexter County, Texas. We're going to remove that from the agenda. Can I have a motion to remove it?
So, move.
Motion by Councilman Thompson, is there a second?
Second.
Tabled. We're actually asked to table it.
Tabled. To table.
Tabled.
That'll be the motion, motion tabled.
Motion to table. Motion to table, number ten.
Second.
Second by Councilman Thompson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Tabled.
Council, we did have two speaker cards that wanted to talk.
Oh, on ten?
On number ten, we had two.
Okay.
I think you can come back.
Come on up.
Donald Murray.
Who's our speaker?
Had they voted? You did vote.
Yeah.
The table.
Well, the table, so it's really, now, it's no reason.
Up to you.
You're here, and I'm not letting anybody not have an opportunity to speak. Come on up, man.
I just wanted to make a quick comment.
Yes, sir.
This is so close to the item three, it was also-
Yes, sir.
-tabled. The, next time, when you're, if they could come together side by side, where the viewing would be the same, because they all have the same connective water issues with the property at ten and three, and one of them's heavy industrial, and this other one, I think, was light commercial, light industrial, which is not residential housing, so I don't know how that would affect in the end run, the residential housing. And I don't know on the light commercial, if that still allows for modular homes or not, which may go away anyway. So, I don't know if that's on the quarter or not. So, I just thought maybe they ought to be put at least stair step, three, four items right next together.
Understand. Thank you.
I have a question if I may. I can't, I didn't understand.
He'll, he'll be back in a couple more.
Right. We'll put it back on the next agenda, together.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Is there another one?
Yes, sir. Same issue.
Yes, sir.
It's all about water. You'd think I was in the agriculture business, but I'm not. It's all about water, and at this time, I would like to, for somebody to give me some ideas as to where I can go and get the scope of all this, what is, what's being planned in the future, and what kind of industries being proposed to be put on this property.
We'll probably build a next agenda, and I probably direct you, Richard, to direct Liz.
Yeah. If you would, Liz, raise your hand. If you would visit with Liz, she can outline for you what's allowed in light industrial, what type of industry, and what's about, allowed in heavy industrial.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming up here. Mike, speaking as well?
Yes, sir. Come on up. We have, that's all we have is water there, so we can't have our water damaged, and we're out of the city limits there. We're next to-
Right next to west side of, excuse me, east side of Blakely.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
And then Blue Marks, west, right next west of Blakely, button up to ten.
Right. I think I'm correct. All y'all ought to get with Liz to discuss this in greater detail after the meeting, like, another day. Not tonight.
We didn't get anything to show what heavy industrial was.
Understand.
When I got my package, only got about three pages, so we have not put it.
We'll sort that out with Liz.
Sir, may I have your name for the record, please?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it. All right, let's move on to Agenda Item Number Eleven. It's consider authorize the city of Odessa Police Department to apply for and accept three canine vests from vested interest in canines. Deputy Police Chief Matt Davidson.
Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you for your time. This is just a grant for our canines, for ballistic vests. Three out of our four canines, they're vest. In a recent inspection, we found out that they're expired. They last about every five years. Vested interest for canines, that's all they do, is provide grants, and we just want permission to apply for this grant. They already said they have the money for us, so this is just for your approval.
To win-win.
Yes, sir.
All right. Gentlemen, any questions?
So, move.
Motion by Councilman Canel, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Stoker, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you very much.
All right. Let's go to item number twelve. Consider to enter into an agreement with Permian Basin Community Centers, DBA, Permian Care, to provide two mental health officers to the crisis response team. Chief Gurkey.
Good evening again. This is a project that is very near and dear to my heart. I think this is long overdue, and what this does is create two mental health teams. By team, I mean a police officer with a social worker, with a qualified mental health professional that will answer those calls for services that require that type of professional. Also, we hope to diminish the number of critical incidents that we have to answer because of this. The whole idea behind this type of unit is holistic care for those, those members of our community that need this type of care. So, this is, it's a four-hundred-seventy-two-thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety-eight-dollar grant with a match from us of one-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand, one-hundred-and-forty-six dollars. Keep in mind that the vast majority of that match can be assumed by the use of our vehicles and paying salaries and that sort of thing. So, really, that number is a, the number that is associated with that one-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand dollars is much lower, probably a tenth of that.
All right. Thanks, Chief.
I have Chris Barnhill here with Permian Care.
Absolutely. Yeah, for Norma. I'm Chris Barnhill. I'm the chief executive officer with Permian Care, and I really greatly appreciate y'all's time tonight. This is a project that I've been working on for about five years, to bring co-responder programs into this area. And when I spoke to Chief Gurkey last year, it was something that was passionate to him, and so there was a mental health grant for justice-involved individuals issued by Texas Health and Human Services, and we went after that, you know, as your local mental health authority, and we bring a lot of those funds into these communities. But we were successful. This grant has already been included in the budget for the next two years of the state operational funds, and so if we get this approved tonight, it's good at least through 2027. But historically, these funds continue to come to us on a recurring basis, until such time that we accidentally don't use as much as we're supposed to, or make errors in the targets that we're serving, and that has never happened to us before. So, it does partner social workers with law enforcement. Right now, we respond in community through our crisis hotline, but we do have an hour to come to that scene. And, you know, sometimes law enforcement has either taken actions, you know, that they thought were best, or sometimes they might not call us at all, and this does resolve a lot of that efficiency and give us opportunities to really respond to these crisis calls, to get them in the best situations, to be successful, and especially as we prepare for this new Permian Basin behavioral- And especially as we prepare for this new Permian Basin behavioral health center to make sure that we're wrapping all these programs around that and making it effective and everything that it's trying to do as well. And that is about all I had to say. If you had any questions, I do see in the contract that I need to update the mayor. I've got the wrong mayor on there and I, I'm a CPA. There's a math error, so I am shamed and, and I apologize for that in front of y'all, but I can fix those things and get them to Dan and, and make sure that that all gets approved and gets to you appropriately.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Hi, gentlemen, I have a question.
Yeah, absolutely.
Chief, the, uh,
Yes.
the officers, uh, mental health officers.
Yes.
Will they, will they be two individuals from your current staff of officers?
Yes, uh, as we move forward in the future, maybe we can hire people to fill this, these slots. But if we want to get this kicked off as soon as, as soon as possible, we're going to have to use people that we already have. Now, that may seem like that's going to create a shortage for us. Yes, but no. And the reason I say no is that patrol's already handling these types of calls. And, and these types of calls take up an enormous amount of time. Um, if we shift that to these teams, then that's, those calls that patrol doesn't have to handle and they're free up to do the other things. So yes, but no.
Will those officers have any kind of, uh, uh, mental health background, uh, as far as their
So we have a number of, of, of police officers right now that have had, uh, some significant mental health training.
Okay.
Um, there's a standard before they can be part of this team, they hit that, there's a standard training that they have to go through. And we'll ensure that that happens. We actually have an instructor, um, in-house that can do that for us. And we'll, again, accomplish that before they, they go out and are active as a team.
Very good.
Thank you, sir.
That is a terrific program, chief. So our share's a hundred and forty-four?
Yes.
Out of your budget?
Well, again, so.
I'm just asking. I don't.
No, that's a fair question. Um, hello, everyone. Whenever this grant came up, um, we're working on a new grant policy with Mr. Morton that gets finance involved. So when this match comes up, finance needs to be very involved in that to make sure we're not exceeding budgets, make sure it's the right match. Um, I worked with your team and we were able to find some of our vehicles that we have already got purchased or on their way. They're, they worked with us a little bit on the match because this is kind of rush deal. So it's actually not going to cost us any extra and we're avoiding all the supplanting by Chief Gurkey's actually creating a position for these two officers. So although they're current employees, they are a different position, so that's clear. Uh, much of the equipment we either have currently that can be repurposed for a share because they have been bought recently, or it is stuff we do truly need. And so again, as long as they stay with these new officers, these new positions, it's not supplanting. So we will not see an increase to our budget at all due to this match.
Absolutely. Thank you. Very helpful.
They usually went over a lot.
That's just one of those questions we have to ask.
Well, absolutely.
Alright, any other discussion or questions, gentlemen? Don't entertain a motion.
So I'll move.
Oh, I think, uh, councilman Thompson, Beach is right, uh, Greg was second.
Cause he's closer, you can't hear.
Huh?
Bang that gal.
Second. Alright. Is there a second, councilman?
Second.
Second by councilman Stoker. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you guys very much. Probably to Legal, to Dan Jones.
Yep. I just need to update the mayor and stuff. Thank you, sir.
Alright, chief, don't move a muscle. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you guys for that. I really appreciate that one.
Ah, you're welcome. Jim, item thirteen, consider to apply and accept funds from the City of Odessa Police Department for the twenty-twenty-six HIDA grant in the amount of sixty-six thousand, three hundred dollars. Chief?
Yes, this is, uh, simply the HIDA grant, which is a high intensity drug trafficking area, which, um, uh, we belong to the West Texas HIDA, which is headquartered out of El Paso. I'll be headed there tomorrow, as a matter of fact, for our board meeting. Um, but these grant funds, the sixty-six thousand, three hundred, um, pays for overtime. Uh, twenty-two hun, twenty-two thousand dollars pays for overtime for two officers, um, fringe benefits, uh, travel, supplies, and other contractual obligations. So basically, this is money that DEA, the federal government, is giving to us to help pay overtime, to help fight the narcotics problem in our area.
Fantastic. Alright, gentlemen, any questions?
Always good to get free money.
Don't entertain a motion.
I make a motion.
Motion by councilman Thompson is our second?
No, it's not.
Mitch.
I mean, Mitchell, what did I say? Apologies. We do not look alike. Y'all look exactly alike. Motion by councilman, Mitchell is our second.
Second.
Second by councilman Stoker. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You guys all look similar to me.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief. All these councilmen, they all look alike. Jim, item fourteen, consider purchase of solar lights. Jonathan?
Mayor, council, good evening. We are considering the purchase of solar lights for three parks, uh, which include Woodson, San Jacinto, and Murray Fly Park. Uh, the total cost for the improvements, uh, will be a hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and four dollars, and the funds are within the park's budget.
These are solar?
Not asking for solar lights.
You don't have to wire them, right?
No, no wiring.
Same ones we used out at the Rattler Ranch?
They're the same light, the, the same lights that we used at Rattler Ranch, as well as Salinas Park. Um, we, we've done the research. Uh, we, we love these lights. We've had no issues whatsoever in the last year and a half. Uh, this company, uh, is currently doing a highway project in Fort Stockton. Uh, they've done major projects in Fort Worth, San Antonio, uh, Los Angeles, and Las Vegas. Uh, so we really, we really love these lights.
Good.
So I did have a question earlier. Making sure that they meet the ASTM standards. And looking through all this, it does look like they meet all the candle power, foot power, whatever.
Absolutely. And the, the wind rating is for our areas is ninety miles an hour and these meet that requirement ninety, a minimum of, of ninety miles an hour.
But they do stay on all night? The battery keeps them awake all night?
Yes, sir. Uh, and there are, uh, the warranty on these lights is, it's a, uh, eight-year non-pro rated, uh, warranty that includes parts and labor. Uh, the warranty, uh, goes up to twelve years. Uh, the ten to twelve year, uh, if something happens to the battery, we'll need to replace that. Uh, otherwise, we have about a ten-year warranty on these lights.
Do these, uh, you know, and then we got into the issue downtown because we wanted to put banners on the lights or speakers or hang a planter or something. You know, would these have the ability to do that after the fact or now?
Potentially, I would, I would have to, um, I would have to ask the manufacturer and follow up with you on that question.
Future ones we have out at Rattler?
Yes, sir.
Stay on all night because I didn't say, I just don't know, but usually.
Absolutely. Uh, sign, uh, sign down to sign up. Yes, sir.
That was the problem at Rattler, is that people weren't using the facility to eat at night because the parking lot was dark. And so Jonathan put these lights out there and to help the business a lot.
Yes, sir. And that, that's one of our, um, one of our top priorities in the, in the Parks Department. Uh, safety and usability, uh, you know, so we can, people can use the walking trail after dark. Um, the lights are much needed. Uh, there's just not enough around the park system. So uh, after, our, our plans are after the installation of these three parks, we have six more uh, that we would like to, um, budget for and allocate funds to, to like those as well.
What's your time frame?
So, uh, these will, uh, we should be receiving them within, I would say, so four to six weeks. Uh, we are going to contract the installation out. Currently getting bids from a couple of different contractors. Uh, just waiting to see that number. Um, we have the funds in the park's budget for the installation as well. Uh, but we're gonna, we're going to contract that out so we can, we can get these, all three parks installed in a timely manner.
Good. Time for some of that.
Yeah.
Okay. Jim, any other questions? Jonathan?
Move approval. Move approval.
Motion by councilman Thompson, for sure. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by councilman Stoker. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, Jonathan.
Thank you.
Alright, let's move to out agenda item numbers fifteen. Consider approval of amended professional service agreement contract now including the northeast water line and elevated storage tank and appropriate funds for the project. Alex?
Good evening, mayor and council. The utilities department is here to ask for your consideration and approval of the amended professional services agreement contract with Kimley Horn. This amendment would remove the current scope within the contract and adding the engineering and design of the northeast two million gallon elevated storage tank, extension of the twenty-four inch water line, thirty percent roadway and drainage schematic from East One Hundred Street to North Fodry Road. Currently, the contract totals one million nine hundred and sixty-three thousand and three hundred dollars, for which funds are already allocated within a project account from the Pioneer Funds. Uh, the amendment will add an additional one million, three hundred and five thousand, one hundred dollars to the contract cost, resulting in a total project cost of three million, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars. We are seeking an appropriation of funds in the amount of one million dollars from the water impact fee revenues and three hundred and five thousand, one hundred dollars from Pioneer wastewater cell revenues. Uh, at this time, I'd like to introduce Kimley Horn's team, who will give a presentation on the project and their involvement with the waste, uh, with the water master plan. Uh, this plan incorporates this capital improvement project and highlights key aspects of the infrastructure improvements.
Thanks, Alex. Chandler?
Welcome.
Alright, thank you. Oh, sorry. Good evening. Thank you, mayor and city council for your time and the opportunity to work on this, uh, very critical infrastructure project for the city. Uh, my name is Chandler Shields and I work for Kimley Horn in our Lubbock, Texas office. And then also with me today are my partners, John Atkins and Andrew Simonson from our Fort Worth office. So first, I wanted to highlight just some of the brief project history of how this project came about. So Kimley Horn developed the, uh, water, wa, water and wastewater master plan for the city back in two thousand nineteen. We finalized that. And as part of our study, we came up with a capital improvement plan of several water infrastructure projects that this, we recommend the city go through with as far as the fixed deficiencies in the existing system, but also to accommodate for future growth. And one of these areas was in the northeastern part of the city, as you can see, zoomed in. And so that's the project we're talking about today, the northeast water line and elevated storage tank. So the primary driver of this project is growth. Um, as many of you are aware, in the city of Odessa, there's a significant amount of growth in the north and eastern part of the city. And this project will primarily serve that area. So back when we completed the master plan back in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, we worked, worked with the planning department and several other, uh, city staff members to come up with an anticipated growth rate of six point eight percent, which at the time was what we thought to be pretty aggressive, um, to make sure that we were accommodating for future growth. After coordination with, um, the city staff, we actually have determined that the amount of growth that the city has actually experienced since twenty eighteen is about seventeen point five percent year-over-year growth and average water connections per year. So just further proving the fact that this is a very critical project that needs to get completed to serve the growth in the north and eastern part of the city, but also for the city to remain compliant with TCQ criteria. Now I'm going to outline the, uh, project limits. So the project starts on the top left of your screen there at, uh, East Thir, One Hundred Street and Evans Boulevard. Um, we're going to be tying into an existing twenty-four inch water line there. And then we'll be going east along what would be, um, East One Hundred Street all the way to where North Fodry Road would intersect. And then we head south along Fodry Road until the intersection of Yukon Road and, um, Fodry. The specs of this project will be seven point seven miles of twenty-four inch water line. It will give the city an additional two million gallons of elevated storage capacity to the water system. And the overall anticipated construction cost is forty-one million dollars. One of the key elements of this, uh, this proposal that we have in front of you today is going to be the roadway corridor study that we're going to perform. And the reason why this is so critical is, as you can see on the map, um, a lot of this area, the, at, the part that's shown in pink there, that's city limits, existing city limits. And so majority of this project is located outside the city limits. So there's going to need to be a significant amount of easement negotiations and acquisitions with this project. And so as we were talking with staff about this project, we, we all agreed that it made most sense that while we're negotiating a water line easement with these property owners, why not go ahead and negotiate a hundred fifty feet worth of right-of-way for the future road that's going to be there in the future to serve these citizens? And so as part of that study, we're, we're actually going to generate pretty much a thirty percent design of the roadway. And we'll, we'll analyze the existing oil and gas infrastructure, which as y'all are probably already imagined, there's several, um, existing oil and gas infrastructure elements in the area. And then we'll also look at, um, a preliminary drainage analysis. So we'll come up with what, what drainage structures are going to be needed to convey water across these pu, future roadways. And most importantly, whatever we, um, develop on the roadway side, the, the goal is that once we're designing the water line, they're not going to conflict in the future. So last thing we want to do is, um, dig up an existing, uh, water line um, that we just put in for a roadway. I didn't do it. Alright, and then, uh, so another part of this slide that I just wanted to highlight is that East One Hundred Street and North Fodry Road are both identified in the city's, uh, two thousand twenty-three master thoroughfare plan. And all I wanted to highlight here is that whatever we, um, propose on the roadway side, we'll make sure that it's in line with the city's plan. So we'll work, um, hand-in-hand with city staff on that. And then, um, now we can talk about construction funding. So like I said before, we're anticipating costs for this project to be forty-one million dollars for just construction alone. Um, there's several different avenues that the city could go through with, um, to, um, fund this construction of this project, one of those being certificates of obligation and another one being the Texas Water Development Board, uh, Development Fund, uh, which we have experience with, uh, ac, acquiring funds from the Texas Water Development Board. If the city were to go through with that option, um, applications would be due at the end of this year and then they would become available, um, at the fall of next year.
So, quick question.
Yes, sir.
That is a low-interest loan, correct?
Yes.
It's not a grant?
Yes, thank you. Sorry. Got my buttons mixed up. Yes, uh, both of those would be, uh, low-interest loans. It would just be evaluating which, which interest rate would be lowest.
Or, or council could obviously fund through cash.
Correct. Yes, sir. Absolutely. Okay. And then that's a picture of what the tank could look like. We would, we would recommend a composite elevated storage tank and that's what, um, those look like, so. And then I also wanted just to, to go through a high-level schedule with y'all. So if we were to get started on this project today, um, giving notice, proceed. Uh, we would kick off our survey efforts, easement acquisition, and then our, obviously our design for the project. Uh, we anticipate that we'd be done with that in the spring of twenty twenty-six. And then we would go through an advertisement and bidding to, um, procure a contractor for the project. And then they would most likely get started in the fall of two thousand twenty-six. In our experience with projects of this size and magnitude across the state of Texas, um, a project like this would probably take two years in construction. So the project would not be, um, fully installed and/or online until the fall of two thousand twenty-eight. And with that, thank you again for the opportunity and if, uh, I'll let y'all ask any questions if there's any.
I've got, Alex, I've got several questions. Number one, we, I don't remember that we have any plans for a hundredth street right now. It stops at three thirty-eight.
It currently stops at three thirty-eight. Yes, sir.
And we are pulling water now and running it underneath three thirty-eight to a, to that development over there, correct?
To which development?
No, no. Hundred, at a hundredth street, that's Windmill Crossing. I thought we had a line going that direction now.
Going east from?
Going west. One coming from Gardendale.
Okay, there, there is a line that we're working on currently coming from Gardendale.
Going to a hundredth.
Going to Gardendale. I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
But going to a hundredth street. I think, I know there's a line going to a hundredth street.
Okay, yes, sir. There is a line that is at a hundredth street right now. Yes.
Yeah, it goes underneath three thirty-eight, correct?
Yes, sir.
So then the road's going to go on the other side of three thirty-eight. Okay, which is, okay. So I understand that, then it hits Fodry.
Okay, yes, sir.
Now, we've had a hard time with Fodry with drainage.
Yes, sir.
So I'm not willing to tear up that thirty-eight million dollar road to bring another twenty-four inch line down Fodry. So I, Harry, what's your idea there?
So that would be something that we would work with, with Joe's team and then also with Chandler's team on getting everything from where we're currently at, at Fodry. And then we would tie in into the water main. That would be where our Fodry line runs up, so.
Where the fa, Fodry line, because we had to lower a bunch of, you know, pipelines.
When we install all the drainage.
And that water up that way anyway.
I think John Landgraf might be able to shed some light on this matter.
Help me, John.
If you come to this podium for us, introduce yourself.
I think I'm, I think I'm close.
John Landgraf, you're close. The twenty-four inch line goes up to the city limit line now. It was built with the money that, to get to the, uh, industrial park and that'll also serve the regional park. So we do, we have a twenty-four inch line to the city limit line now.
Yes.
Yeah, shown on that map. Started expansion, actually, the proposed water line would be up there at the same place you'd start the Fodry Road expansion because that line's already in.
That's the one we just put in?
Yes.
Yeah.
Just complete.
Just complete, yeah. That's to the sports conference. Gotcha.
That's correct.
Just making sure I understood. I just didn't want to tear anything up going down Fodry.
I just didn't want to tear anything up going down Fodry.
Okay.
No, it's, it's all done.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I misunderstood what you were saying. Yeah, it's, it's already.
I'm sure I wasn't clear, I just, I'm not an engineer, I just know, I think I know what's going on, but.
Yes, sir.
Trying to make sure we.
Yes, sir.
Ruin what we've already done.
Yes, sir.
We're trying to do. Okay. So the other question I had was, you talked about using water cap funds?
Uh, impact fee funds.
Impact fee, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. So we currently have one point two million, and I spoke with Joe, and since this is a capital improvement project in our master plan, we can use those funds for this project.
But, so which district are they coming out of? The cap funds have to stay in the same, have to be used in the same area of which they were collecting, if I'm, my memory serves me right.
Okay. That I did not know.
That I know.
Well, it's a question. Only have one.
Yeah, so we can, so we can, yes, sir.
You're probably going to hate me on this.
Okay.
Can I get my question answered?
So we only have one water district, so we should be, we can use it anywhere.
We only have one water district. Okay, I know we did Fodry, we used water cap funds to, as part of the funding for Fodry Road, and that came out of District Two. So you're telling me this can go anywhere?
To my knowledge, yes, sir.
That's not what I remember, Counselor.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Mr. Landgraf, come to the podium. You stay there next time, would you?
That's all right. Separate topic, on the capital improvement funds, water and sewer can be spent citywide. Transportation is broken into three different areas, and the capital improvements funds that are generated in that area have to be spent in that area for transportation. But on water or sewer, they're system-wide.
Okay. I did not, I did not understand it that way.
Yep, this, this would qualify for.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, John.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, I missed the question, this was on impact fees?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's correct.
Chris, you have a question?
So, instead of elevated tanks, back to ground storage tanks with pumps, why are we spending forty-four million dollars on above when we can spend ten million on, on ground storage tanks with pumps? And keep the line pressured up, you could rotate pumps in and out, you also have a fail-safe, one pump goes, you still have another one running. So why are we constantly wanting to go up in the air and spend all of this money going up in the air when we are at flat ground, we can maintain this with pumps? Why do we continuously want to go up in the air?
There's, there's, there's several different reasons for that. First off, if you do have an issue with the pump station, with electricity, generator goes down, you immediately lose any option to give water to those areas. Currently, right now, our rate to give water to the north side, if we lost any electricity at the Yukon Pump Station, is max three hours, max. Our demand in that upper pressure plane will be nothing after three hours. But there are other reasons, Chandler, you want to hop in on that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, great question. There is, as you, as you alluded to, there is an option to enhance pump station improvements. However, the overall operation and maintenance of those pump stations, as far as outweigh the advantages of going to elevated storage, and also too, if you add more elevated storage, you get exceptions from T C Q on as far as how much water you have to provide per connection of elevated, of a pump station capacity. And so there, there's just several advantages from the operations side and maintenance, as well as, you know, compliance with T C Q.
Well, the other thing that I've thought about, and you can probably tell me how much it is, you've got an evaporation problem. That water's open to the sky, and so it's going to be evaporated at a certain rate, especially in the hot summers. You know what that is, Ben Champs? Alex, you understand? You understand my question?
I understand what you mean by that.
Okay, so we've got a tank laying flat, and we're pumping the water down in that to wherever it needs to go. If it's open, like the one over behind the Coliseum, there's evaporation, just like there is in our lakes.
No, 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 I'm talking about.
He's talking about kind of what we have at the Yukon Pump Station.
These are closed storage tanks.
Oh, they're closed storage, I'm sorry. Okay, that's what I was trying to understand.
Yeah, they have fresh water in them, they're just like, just like the above-ground storage tank, except they're about thirty million dollars less. So, you're telling me thirty million dollars worth of maintenance?
It's evaporation, so, sorry.
Not only, not only the maintenance costs, so if we were to expand the, all the pump stations, we'd be obviously pushing a significant amount of flow through those pipes, so we would have to go and make significant upgrades to the existing system as far as upsizing existing pipes. I don't know exactly the vast, like, the, the limits of that impact off the top of my head, but it would be in the millions of dollars having to go and upsize all the existing pipes in order to accommodate for the expansion and flow at these pump stations that you're mentioning.
Water flowing through is creating as many gallons as going up into your above-ground storage tank, you're putting them into on-ground storage tanks at the same flow, so you don't need to upgrade your pipes, you still have pressure pushing water into this, and you have pressure pushing water out of this. You don't need to upgrade your pipes. It's the same amount of water going through that whether you put above ground or you keep it low to the ground. That's the same amount of water flowing through that line. If it's a twenty-four inch, what's it per gallon? What's per gallon on a twenty-four inch pipe?
I don't know, that off the top of my head. Andrew, you want to jump in on that?
I feel like I'm not giving the answer, so I'll have somebody else in. I'm Andrew Simonson, also with Kimley Horn. I think probably just at the bare minimum is the state requires elevated storage. So Chandler was talking about you get a discount for the larger you make the elevated storage, but at a bare minimum, you have to have an elevated storage tank. That's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. Once you get above a certain connection account within your city or your pressure plane, they make no exceptions for having a water tower elevated storage tank. So the rule, just as a baseline, is a hundred gallons per connection. So that's, that's the most simple answer, but I, I agree, or I'm hearing what you're saying on the different operational strategies, but they make no exceptions on the, on the fundamentals of having a tank, so.
That's just somebody that doesn't know what the heck they're doing. Sorry. At the statewide level, you've got the same amount of storage in that tank, you're just moving it with pumps, and that makes no sense to me. I'm sorry. This is just like government. We don't know what one hand's doing, while the other's not.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Any other questions?
Bill, thanks.
If not, entertain a motion to approve the amended professional service agreement contract.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Cadell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Thompson, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous, thanks, Alex.
All right, Aaron. Agenda item number sixteen, to consider and take appropriate action regarding the purchase of Odessa Police Department and Odessa Fire Rescue and Solid Waste Vehicles and related equipment and budget adjustments.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you know, Mr. Morton recently had a conversation with each of you related to the purchases of vehicles and upfitting for P D Fire and Solid Waste. What this resolution would do, would formally authorize those purchases and necessary budget adjustments. This resolution authorizes the appropriation of three million forty-five thousand eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty-seven cents from Equipment Services fund balance. By doing this, this would leave a projected ending fund balance of nine million five hundred and sixty-eight thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty-three cents. Obviously, the equipment is greatly needed and certainly essential to carrying out the mission of these departments.
Thank you, Aaron.
Do you have any more questions for Aaron? Not entertain a motion?
I saw move.
Motion by Councilman Vasquez, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Mitchell, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Agenda item number seventeen, consider approving amended the ordinance of food truck code of ordinances, chapter six, article six dash six, Omar.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening. Thank you, first of all, once again, for Councilmember Stoker and Councilmember Mitchell, thank you for your assistance in this. So we're here to, for you to consider approving and amending the ordinance for the food truck code of ordinances. Basically, these amendments are going to make it a lot easier, it's going to streamline the process for food truck vendors, it's going to make it easier on our customers.
All right, gentlemen, any questions? Would anybody like to make a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Stoker, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Mitchell, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous, thanks, Omar.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Agenda item number, Tim Ogden, way to go, guys. You must like food trucks. Agenda item eighteen, consider special event fees. Jonathan, he doesn't like food trucks.
Mayor, Council, we are considering updating the fee structure and process of special events, applications. The first change will be to remove the four-H Club and Extension Homemakers Club from exempt uses. They no longer utilize our facilities or, or for events. We would like to keep the city of Odessa and Ector County, and include the Ector County Hospital District, E C I S D Schools, U T P B, and Odessa College. Additionally, we'll be implementing event fees, depending on the size of the event, electricity, usage for electricity, and additional trash barrels, as well as a food truck and similar vendors per day at the event. One thing to note is that all nonprofit organizations will receive a fifty percent discount on those fees. Currently, with a special, with a city sponsorship form, the first event, for that event, you can receive up to a hundred percent of in-kind donations, so basically the event would be no cost. The second year moving forward, you can be approved up to fifty percent of, of the in-kind donations for the event. That's, this streamlines that process, so you don't have to fill that form out if you are a nonprofit. Additionally, we will be, we'll be charging seven hundred and fifty dollars for mobile stage rental and five hundred dollars for exempt status uses. The, the reason for the changes to the ordinance and the event fees is for, for event logistics and for us to, we're not trying to make money on these events, we're just trying to help with the cost of, of hosting these events.
Thanks, Jonathan.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any questions for Jonathan? If not, entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Motion by Councilman Thompson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Canal, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thanks, Jonathan.
Thank you.
All right, agenda item nineteen, discuss and consider all civil justice commission, board members, appointments, reappointment, removing, modification. Omar, is there anything tonight?
No, we don't have anything tonight.
Okay, thank you.
So is it, may I ask a quick question? Would it be possible to create something in the SharePoint file or something where all the applications go and live within twenty-four hours of receipt, so that we can all see everything that's been submitted? Because I've had another person reach out, but they submitted an application for several things that I've not seen. So, how can we? I just want to figure out a way that if people are putting in applications to serve on these boards, that we know that.
So the way I handle the application process is when an interested citizen submits their application, I look to see if the, if they're, if they're, if the board's term is up, if not, or if there's a vacancy, if not, I will hold it until council reviews that time, whether it's a vacancy or the term is about to be up. But yeah, I'll be happy to post it online.
But even with that, I mean, there was a guy from, from December for the Animal Control Board that, I mean, I didn't see it until the rest of the applications came in, so I don't know. For me, I think if we knew, hey, and I, and I get the length of this application, I mean the agenda, but, you know, I still want to see, I've always wanted to see every committee, their term limits, the vacancies coming up, and then, you know, hey, if I've got somebody to appoint, it's not a surprise in two weeks and crap, I got to find somebody. So I don't, again, I don't know the best way to do it, but I would like to see all the applications as they come in, and.
Can we set up a share file or something simple?
Absolutely.
Perfect.
I have a question, Norma. Norma, I know there's some boards that each council member has the opportunity to appoint someone. How does that work for the at-large position? Any different?
No, the at-large has its own position, so he can appoint anybody he would like to, as long as it fits the qualifications, if necessary.
But yeah, if we were able to see, like, you know, and pick one of these, instead of just which seats are coming up, to see all the seats and all the expiration dates, you know, then you'd have some sort of timeline.
Sure.
Just to get an idea.
Just figure something out, I think, we'll work on that, I'll say. Joanne, did I see your hand up?
Yes, sir.
Come on up to the podium, Joanne Davenport.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
I'm in trouble.
My name is Joanne Davenport Littleton, I reside at one thousand and five Pine Avenue. Forgive me for the way I look, but I was at home having some work done on my home, and I was listening to the council meeting, and what I heard disturbed me, and I even left the people working at my house to try to get here. Earlier tonight, we were talking about hot monies and outside agencies monies, and there was a room filled with minority people, a lot of them were African Americans. And the information that was, that was displayed, it bothered me. Number one, it was a lie, okay? City Attorney Dan Jones said that the Black Cultural Council of Odessa has had a problem following the guidelines for hot monies. That is a lie. That is a lie. Now, we have a room full of African Americans that constantly question, do we get monies from the city? Do, do we meet the guidelines? And we're constantly proving to them, yes, we do get fifty thousand or whatever monies from the city, yes, we do meet the guidelines, we have no problem. He said we had a problem? That's a lie. We do not have a problem meeting the guidelines, okay? Last year, we applied for hot monies. The city council and finance department took it upon themselves to say, it would be best if y'all apply, or y'all get general fund monies. We didn't ask to get general fund monies. They told us it would be best if we get general fund monies. No problem, we just want the money. But the, I wanted that to go on record, because now what you have is a whole community that's going to go back to the community and say, we was at city council, and the city attorney said that the Black Cultural Council was having a problem meeting the guidelines for hot monies. That needs to be a rebuttal and, and apology given.
Ms. Joanne.
Yes, sir.
What I said.
I know what you said, I heard you.
Was that you were given.
We were having a problem meeting the guidelines, that's not true.
And that's, that's the way.
No, Dan, respectfully, don't clean it up.
Well.
The, the records will reflect. All I'm saying is, please, please, you just misled a room full of African American people. And as a city attorney, that needs to be, there needs to be a rebuttal, because that's not the truth. And I'm not happy about it, but I don't even want you to talk because you're lying.
No.
Yes, you are. Yes, you are.
You were dealing with general fund.
I'm sorry, thank you.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Just know this year, you have a kinder, gentler city council, we look forward.
The Lord answers prayers.
Okay.
He answers prayers. He answers prayers. And we, as an, as an organization, we look forward to working with the council, and in a couple of, I think, the 26, we'll be turning in an application. Well, we received two applications, one for hot money and for general fund money. And I grant you, with the monies that the city gives us, our budget is three, four times that amount of money. So we don't have a problem meeting the guidelines. But what, what's upsetting is that said, and you have all these citizens listening to that, and now they're going to go back with it. It's not true. And I had to come so they could be on record that it was not true. Mayor, council, thank you for your time.
You didn't come to support my street?
I knew you had it.
All right. Move on to agenda item number twenty, executive session, as authorized by the Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, subsection A1, to deliberate about personnel matters, the city council may adjourn into executive session to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of public officer or employee, city manager candidates. All right, gentlemen, need to go into executive session. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Councilman Mitchell, go into executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Haney. We are now at executive session at 7:30.
We are back on the record at 8:45 PM. There was no action taken in executive session.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Thompson is our second. Second by Councilman Vasquez, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are back on the record at 8:45 PM. There was no action taken in executive session. With those that are still here, I want to tell you all how difficult a process it was. We had three outstanding candidates. I mean, all of them make a fantastic city manager. They are excellent education, excellent qualifications, you know, excellent experience. It was a very difficult decision, but I want to thank all three candidates for applying. I wanted to tell them how grateful we are as a council for their participation in the process because they were all three very deserving. Having said that, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I authorize, I mean, I move to authorize Richard, our intern city manager, to complete the employment agreement with David Vella, beginning employment date June 2nd, 2025.
The motion is our second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Thompson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I so move, Mr. Mayor.
Motion by Councilman Vasquez to adjourn is our second.
Our second.